All right. Let me see if this is even going to open up for me. All right. I would like to call this to order. It is six o'clock. Mr. Town Clerk, if you could please take attendance roll call.
Of course, Madam Mayor. Councilman Goldsmith?
Yeah.
Councilman Trelinger? Mayor James?
Here.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
She has indicated she will not be here this evening.
And Councilman Jenkins?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank goodness, and we have a meeting. If you all would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic of British States. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right, the first item of order on our agenda is the approval of minutes. I'm hoping that you all had an opportunity to review them, and if so, I would like to entertain a motion to accept the three meetings as presented.
I move the accepted minutes as presented.
All right, do I have a second?
A second, Madam Mayor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Second agenda is the approval of November 7th meetings. Do I have a motion to accept the November 7th minutes?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the minutes dated November 7th, 2022.
Okay, for the regular meeting?
And also, as well as for the closed session minutes as well.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please, oh, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. And this brings us to public comment. If anybody in the audience would like to speak this evening, I ask that you please come up here, state your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limits, and if you could limit it to three minutes, that would be wonderful. Do we have anybody?
To the best of my knowledge, no one has signed up, I can check on that, but you've missed item 1.4, which is new, the approval of this agenda by the town council.
Oh, I did. Hold on. All right, so we have a December, I certainly. What did I, oh, 1.4, approval of the meeting agenda, yes. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda as written?
Madam Mayor, I have to make a proposal of who the meeting agenda has written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. I didn't see that, it was right under that flag. All right, and I do think we have a speaker, would you like to speak this evening? Come on up to the podium, state your name, and whether you live in the incorporated town limits, and go ahead.
I'm a citizen of Maryland, so I'm within the town. And I'm here today as a follow-up to an email that I've sent over the last year regarding a stormwater management issue and a lack of inaction taken by the town. I might repeat everything that I've said, I've sent in emails. And those who can't take action are aware of my frustration. I'm here more as a request for the town to improve and modernize its ability to communicate with the citizens who require assistance. It should not be hard for me to get a status update for something that was submitted October 19th, 2021. Or even be told where it sits in the current pecking order of jobs for the public works, stormwater and stormwater management, what they currently have scheduled. I might be naive to think that the government could be efficient and easy to work with. But if this is information that cannot be accessed by the town quickly and efficiently, then I would suggest a software upgrade. I mean, Domino's has a pizza tracker, and I would hope that I could get better than we can't tell you when or I'll get back to you. I realize I don't need it to be done in 30 minutes or less. But I find it hard, and I find it that it's impossible to find another industry you're aligned for that would be acceptable to allow something to sit for over 365 days without inaction. Would be acceptable for you and your professional or personal lives for something to sit untouched. Chances are, you can't find any examples in your own life or many other industries that follow that's paying higher. Government should always and will always prioritize the needs of the masses over individual. And it's clear, fixing singles, which was the initial issue last year that would then come up, preparing the integration of new neighborhoods, amongst other things, will probably take priority over my single house. But I would hope that my one issue, although relatively small, it should not have taken this long to have action. And I would think it's something that, within 13 months, someone could give me answers. From the beginning, I have not forced the issue, I won't go to social media as most people would in today's world. I've read emails, today I'm just hoping for something will happen. And if that ain't anything, that is an evolution of communication, something that can come to this and benefit not only me but other residents in our community, that over time, when we have questions, when we want to know answers, that we can get something in return, more than just, I don't know, or I will get back to. Would love to continue a dialogue with anyone in this room, future situations that may come up with my own home, which is in general, how to make things better between citizens and government communication. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, I appreciate that. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? And there's no one online that has signed up. All right, we'll go to our next item on the agenda, which is our December 2022 meeting schedule. Mr. Town Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the December 22 meeting schedule was established over a year ago. And for some reason, meetings have been established on the second and fourth Tuesdays, one very, very close to Christmas. It has been suggested by, by those about the schedule that perhaps the first, or the second and third, as opposed to the second and fourth Tuesdays, or the possibility that only one meeting is necessary in December.
Right, thank you. In talking about the upcoming agendas, it does look like December, I never want to say the word, is a light agenda, because it always comes back to bite us, but it looks like there, we don't have a lot on the agendas for December. And I would entertain counsel if anyone would like to make a motion to just meet once in December, December 13th. If it is the will of the council, we could take away the 27th of December meeting, unless there's something pressing. Mr. Manuel, is there anything pressing that you foresee in December? There you go.
No.
All right, so counsel, if someone would like to make a motion, and then we can have discussion?
I'll make a motion that we only hold the one meeting in December, and December 10th, was it?
13.
13, 13th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
So just, just for discussion, so if something were to come up, what timeframe would we have to advertise if there were going to be a second meeting in December? And, and if there were, what would it, what day would it be? Would be the week later, of course, that's the 20th, 20th, which is a bad day, but I'm just looking at contingency, that's all.
Yeah, and if we did have an item come up that needed attention, would fall under our what approved guidelines, so it would have to be in before the deadline of, is it the 12th?
So we, okay.
So you would have a week's notice.
I mean, I don't foresee it, but just in case this unbeknownst to us or the town manager, that's all.
And any other discussion? All right, so I have a motion that's been properly seconded, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us to matters of information. We have our county attorney here. Mr. Gallow, please come on up here, and we're looking forward to your presentation.
Well, good evening, thank you for having me, this is a rare treat, I never get to come to a public meeting in person, but I'm seeing, so.
For the record. All right, very good. I know you have me for like 35 minutes on the agenda, I'm really not going to be that long. I'm here to talk about ethics tonight, chapter 20 of your code, you have an ethics ordinance. And I wanted to make sure that we know that there's going to be changes, so I thought maybe it would be great, and I talked with the town manager that we'd have like a back to basics of what your ethics ordinance is, what it requires, how we go forward, because it doesn't just apply to you all, it applies to all your boards and commissioners, it applies to the candidates that run. And it's a new subject for you, and it's a new subject for a lot of the staff. So this will be kind of a brief overview, and then I want to get into what exactly you have to do, because I'm here because of business. The state is requiring changes to the ethics laws of all the municipalities, and that's what the ordinance is going to be in front of you. So, so generally, as you know, the state requires that all municipalities have two types of ethics provisions. One deals with conflict of interest, that's a general type of thing, and one deals with financial disclosures. So we'll deal with conflicts of interest, because that affects most of all, planning commission, board of zoning appeals, everyone. And a lot of people believe that when they have a conflict of interest, it's, it's, it's a, it's something in their mind where they feel like, well, it would be inappropriate for me to vote on this. Maybe you're repaving the street in front of my house, maybe it's a board of zoning appeals opinion that affects my neighbor across the street. And while those may be challenging things to deal with, those are not conflicts of interest under your ethics law. Now, that doesn't mean that the individual is required to vote or required to participate. They can always abstain from their votes, they could just say, it's too difficult, because if I vote against my neighbor, it's going to be a real problem, so I just don't want to be involved. And a layman would say that's conflict of interest, but it's really not under your law. Conflict of interest usually deals with money. So if you had a business project that you were proposing here in the town, and you voted on that business project, that would be a conflict of interest, because you're furthering your financial gain. And when I say you, it's the royal you, it's not just you, but it's a qualified relative, husband, parents, kids, siblings. If any of those people had an interest, you wouldn't be able to take action. So that's this typical run-of-the-mill conflict of interest, but there are several different subcategories. For example, if you are a elected official, the use of your prestige of office, because it's very prestigious to be the mayor councilperson. And so if you went in and said to Dunkin' Donuts, I am the councilperson and I should get free coffee, that would be the use of prestige of office. It wouldn't seem like it's a conflict of interest, but under the law, that's a conflict, because you've used something that's not yours. Giving away information. Obviously, we deal with public information all the time, so we're not talking about that, we're talking about with like private information, or, or, for example, you hear about this all the time in like on TV and things like that, where you might know a development's going to go in, and they need a road to get to it, and you know where that road is, so you give the information to your buddy, and they buy the land, so now the town has to buy it from your buddy. Again, see how the money trail goes, that's a conflict. So there's, it's in your ordinance, it's very straightforward. What I noticed in watching, because I have done prep for your, your group, in watching some of your boards, when it is a difficult decision, people say, well, they're recusing themselves, because that's what they think, conflict, recuse, I'm out. The only duty you have to recuse yourself is if you are in conflict with the law, which usually means it's a financial type of interest. Of course, as a member of the body, or any of your other bodies, you can recuse yourself anytime, so that you don't have to have a conflict in order to recuse yourself. My, my example where it's my neighbor, I'm recusing myself, because I really don't want to fight with my neighbor if this thing goes the wrong way. And typically, when you recuse yourself, it's across the board, and people don't usually follow this, so this is something we can do. Meaning that you can't wait until the end and not vote and say you're recusing yourself. You have to recuse yourself upfront from all the discussions. For example, you know, as an attorney, I hope I'm very persuasive. So I would like to be able to persuade my fellow members to do this, but then at the end, I'm going to say, but I'm recusing myself from the vote. I already muddied the waters. So if I'm recusing myself, I'm out at the very beginning. Some places take it to a very obvious degree, where if I were a member of your board and I was recusing myself, I would say that upfront, and I would get up and leave my position, so there's no possibility. You know, some places, when I could be looking at Councilman Goldsmith and giving him the evil eye when he's talking about things I don't like, I'm still influencing. So some places, they just leave the deas off completely. So that's one of the things that people do. What an individual who's uncomfortable with that, they can just abstain. So you know, when you come to a vote, you can vote for something, against, or abstain. And an abstain, an abstention in your charter almost counts as a yes vote. Okay, we won't get into the mathematics, but when you take five, and something has to pass by three, if somebody abstains, you're still counting it as part of the majority, because it's not a no vote. Whereas a recusal takes five people, moves it down to four, which means you could probably have a deadlock. Again, if it's getting to that, and it's that kind of a business, and it's very important, you know, it's a big vote, this is where you ask for an opinion in advance. You either call the town, the town calls me, or if it's something really big, we get an opinion from the Ethics Commission. So that's something that we could probably talk about more with your boards, your planning commissions, your board of zoning appeals and things like that. Very rarely do these issues really come up, that they become a decisive matter, but you'd like to know that in advance. So that's step one in your ethics ordinance, and that applies to everybody. Then step two of your ethics ordinance is called the Financial Disclosure Form, and you all should be very familiar with that, because you have to fill them out. And you've always had to fill them out. But the state law changed probably eight years ago, and it said, not only do you all have to fill this out, but anybody who runs for office, they have to fill out the same form before they are a candidate for office. And the idea is that people want to know supposedly before they vote, they'd like to know, what are your interests? And so the Financial Disclosure Form has several areas that it covers, and it's basically, it's not an itemized financial statement, make people think that it is. But it's, you know, what real property do you own? Because it'd be nice to know, if you own a shopping center, I might want, not want to vote for you, or maybe I do want to vote for you, but I'd like you to know that you have an interest. We have to understand that, like, I come in as a professional, and I don't live here. But you all live here and govern yourselves, which is the way it's supposed to happen, so obviously, you're going to have some potential conflicts that really aren't. Because if traffic is bad at the traffic circle, and you want to make it better, that's going to help you get home quicker. Well, that's not a conflict of interest. You don't want your kids to go to crowded schools, so you're not going to approve developments, that's not a conflict of interest. If you take that to the nth degree, the only way to avoid a conflict of interest is that you all wouldn't make any of the decisions, and somebody who doesn't live here makes them for you. Well, nobody wants that. So that's the idea with the financial disclosure, is we're going to just lay out the playing field of what do you have in a general sense? And it's again, the royal you, it's you and your spouse, or any qualified relative that would be living there. Where do you work? Those are things that you put there, I mean, we'd like to know that, if you work for the school board, well, that's something that the citizens should know. Typically, when you have some type of conflict, not a conflict of interest, all you do is you disclose it in advance. So here's a simple one. Towns usually give money to their fire companies, they give a donation to keep them running. So sometimes, if you're a member of the fire company, you might say, I just want everybody to know, I'm a member of the fire company, when we just have this discussion. That doesn't mean that I'm going to stay out of the discussion, but I wanted everybody to know that, you know, I have that interest as well. Pretty straightforward type of stuff. Under your ethics law, those are the two big areas. You have another area where you require your senior staff, so your treasurer, your town manager, and all the members of your boards and commissions, so if you can think of one, and these are the major, major ones, so the Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, Ethics Board, Election Board. They are not required to fill out the Financial Disclosure Forms, they're required to fill out a gift disclosure form, because you're not allowed to take gifts, right? We all kind of know that, that if somebody bought you a new Cadillac, that might be trying to influence you, that would be money, that would be a conflict of interest. But there are certain gifts you're allowed to take, right? You go to a conference, somebody buys you dinner at the conference, not a big problem, it's got to be under $20. If it's over $20, you have to report it. And that's what this, it doesn't say that you can't go, because what dinners are less than $20 now, if you buy the ticket to go to the MML dinner, it's like $80. So, so you just have to report it. And so your two senior staff members and all your board members every year would file this form saying, I didn't accept any gifts, or I did. Of course, you get the, you get the obvious question, well, what about like if the family gives me a gift for Christmas? It's like, do you think that's what we intended? No, unless your family's a developer building in town, but if that's the case, your family's a developer, you should have been disclosing that upfront. So it's not familial gifts and things like that, again, it's gifts that are in the realm of your work, okay? And, and they're pretty, it's pretty obvious of what we're trying to, to deal with. So those are the major three things that'll apply to the people that you work with, the people you appoint, the people you know. Your ethics ordinance, because your town is so big, has one final provision, and that's lobbying. And people are like, well, you, you hire a lobbyist to go to Annapolis, is that what we're talking about? And it's no. If somebody comes to influence you in town, they need to register under your ethics ordinance as a lobbyist. That doesn't mean an individual who stands up and lives here and says, I have concerns, it means a paid person who is coming in to try to change your vote or make something happen. And there are specific provisions, they have to spend money, they have to be making money, but then you need to, to file a form that I'm a registered lobbyist in the town of O'Plata. Lobbyists would know to do this, because they have to do that on a statewide basis, and they lobby before the General Assembly. So those are your big parts. And as I said when I started, you know, that's the operation of your local ethics board, but the state is the entity that's requiring you to do this. They are saying you must have an ethics ordinance, not just you, 157 towns, you all have to have one. And they gave you a model of what it should be, and guess what? Everybody adopts the model. But it's like a car, a stock car right out of the showroom, you're still going to change something, right? Even if it's just put in the air, the tag on, to make it yours somehow. So you've done that. But anytime you change your ethics ordinance, it's got to be approved by the state. So they're giving you some latitude, but they're like the parents, they kind of want to check your work to make sure you did that, okay? So throughout the years since you've done this, the state has come down with some sweeping changes, and things have been different, and we want changes done across the state, so you all must change your ethics. And they make it easy, they give you the model language, this is what you should have put in there. But it's like getting a model for your car again, you may have made some modifications to your car that the model from the dealer doesn't fit anymore, and you might have to do it and tailor it to yourself. So what they've done over the years, and you all have done, your town has updated throughout the years any changes they want, and we're here again. The state passed in 2021 mandatory changes that have to be done by all the cities and towns in Maryland, and there are basically nine of them that have to be incorporated in your, in your thing. We have that ordinance, it's pending before you, we have a discussion copy, which is the same thing as your ordinance, but it's marked for discussion, and what I did was I just put yellow highlight. Because you'd like to know, even though if you're not familiar with what it was, people are going to be, what was it to what it is? So the yellow highlight shows the new language. Now, I don't want to take the mystery out of all this, but that's their language, it came out of the model, they have to approve this. So if you don't like it, you might want to just hold your nose and vote, because it's kind of have to be that. Now, if there's some really big problem, we can always be the one that says, well, we don't like this, and this is the reason why, but this is the model language, you probably need to go with it. So I wanted to kind of go over what these are, and there's going to be nine of them through here, there's a 10th one that is my gift to you. I think you should include something in here, and you don't need to include this one, this is an optional one, but I will talk about the reasons why. So as we go through, I mean, I know that the clerk can scroll, the first one is, you need a definition of quasi-governmental entity. Apparently, this is like anything else you find in the law, like, anytime there's a problem, they enact a new law to fix it. So there must have been an issue somewhere in the state where somebody said, this doesn't apply, because you're a quasi-governmental entity. And so they said, well, we're going to fix that, you're going to have a definition of what, definition of what that is. So now your, your definition section has two definitions instead of one. So that's pretty much straightforward, we can kind of scroll through to the next. Let's see, you can see, yours is, there we go. So we call this one the MML MAKO amendment, because it's exactly who it applies to. It says, an association or entity acting on behalf of municipality or county. So somewhere along the line, somebody at MML or MAKO made somebody mad in the legislature, because they weren't considered lobbyists, and you didn't have to disclose anything you did with them, and they said, well, that's not very fair, or whatever the reason would have been. So now, anytime you get a gift, it's prohibited, and there's exceptions, and that's in there, but MML and MAKO are now covered by that. So, so that's the MML and MAKO one, we can slide on unless you have any questions. And so there are the ones we just passed there, this was the disclosure of information, again, before it said that you can't, other than in your official duties, disclose information. But I guess somebody didn't do it while they were in office, but as soon as they left office, they did, and said, hey, that's not covered, so now it is. If you're a former elected official, or you're a former employee, you can't disclose any confidential information you have. Again, if you disclose personnel information about somebody, you're probably going to get sued, and you'll probably get charged anyway. So we're talking about things where I gave you the example of, hey, when I was there, I knew that we were going to approve this big subdivision that hasn't been approved yet, and if you buy the property next door, you'd be able to sell it for a profit. That's kind of the ilk of what we're talking about here. Okay, we'll move on. Okay, I got to use the delete button here, this was, I was happy about doing something different. So basically, I told you that this applies to candidates for office, so that's easy enough. And the question always became, when you file to be a candidate, you have to file, you know, where I live, I'm a registered voter, you do all that for like your election side of things. And then there's the second set of forms, which is your Financial Disclosure Forms. And if you're not familiar with the fact you have to do this, it's sometimes intrusive. People be like, well, I'm running for office, I'm not going to tell you like where my house is, or how much my mortgage is, and stuff like that, I don't want to do that. There's a lot of pushback sometimes. Well, this basically says, if you don't fill out those forms, within a certain period of time after you're given notice, you are not a candidate. And that's just the, the way it is, because you can't run for office without having filled out the Financial Disclosure Form. So that gives the statutory backbone to what would be a common sense thing anyway. Then, all of the things that you file in Financial Disclosures are public records, which means they go on file in the town, some places put them on the internet, that you could peruse them on the internet. Hardly anybody ever looks at them, because while they seem very upfront and very straightforward, they don't really have much information that you wouldn't know already. I mean, I can Google where you live, okay, it's not that hard. But if on these forms you include your home address, that can be deleted out. Again, it must make somebody feel good, everyone knows where you live, you're elected officials in the town, and you're the only ones that have to fill these out, so we'd know where you live. But that can be deleted off the form, and then they also define home address as like your non-primary address, so if you had a vacation home or a second home, then that can be taken off the form too. So that's what that's talking about. And then there's more about the public records on the bottom here, it says that if you disclose and you work for one of these entities, so it's the University of Maryland Medical System, a governmental entity, the state of Maryland, or quasi-governmental entity, remember, we needed the definition for that earlier. If that's in there, then the information about how much you get paid by them is, can be deleted, can be redacted. Meaning that the person still has to tell it, the Ethics Commission still gets to see it, but if the public asks to have a copy or review it, that information is taken off. This makes no sense either, this is one where you'll just do, because state employee salary is public information. So I might not be able to get it from the ethics form, but I could do a Public Information Act to the, wherever you work in the state, and I could find it out that way. But this is the one where you got to do, okay, so moving on. Okay, this, that one there, that's the second part of the MML provision, MML MAKO provision, where it catches you under gifts, because not only are you not allowed to accept them, I said there were some exceptions. If you do accept certain gifts, then you have to disclose them, and that's the disclosure part of that. Okay, this one, this is the, again, the University of Maryland exception, where if there is any information that you are going to file, that is, can be redacted if you work for those entities. And then the one on the bottom, that kind of gives you one of those ice cream headaches when you try to figure this out, I actually called the ethic- I actually called the Ethics Commission, said, I don't really understand this. You saw I deleted the old one, which basically said, if you own an interest greater than twenty percent in a business, you have to have to disclose that. So if I owned a partnership fifty fifty with somebody and we were building in La Plata a new office building, I would have to disclose that even though it's not my name, that's my interest. That's pretty straightforward. But now they said, well, we don't want thirty percent. And they have this convoluted way of calculating this because in the old days, I guess you just had a partnership or you had a corporation, you had it very straightforward. But now you might have an LLC that might own ten percent of another company that might own another percent of that company. So they have all these thresholds where you can say, if it's more than twenty five percent of a company that owns more than fifty percent of a different company, you see where the headache is coming. The bottom line with all this, people are like, well, should I know to file this? The idea is if you have a business that's doing business in their town where you work, you probably know you're probably going to have to file something. So this is not a surprise for anybody. But again, this seems a little daunting. If elected officials or candidates need help filling these out, we're always here to help. I mean, we'll certainly, you know, look at the facts. So that's the the most complicated one. So we move on. That basically says that if you're doing a trading and doing business as, so that could be a sole proprietorship and you say, well, I'm trading and doing business as ABC Company. Yeah, to tell us ABC Company because everybody in the world knows that that's, you know, that's the name of the company. We didn't know it was you. So now you got to say, yes, that's my company. Again, pretty straightforward. Okay, this one is my favorite because I made this up. Okay, this is not from the state. And you can say, I didn't really make this up. We took it out of another draft language. But when I went through your whole ordinance, it seemed like this section was missing because you have everything in the draft ordinance that's like kind of according to the the plan. And then you get to, if you could scroll to the next section, number eleven, you go from nine and then eleven is enforcement. And it talks about, you can see that like they can, people can be fined and things like that when they don't follow the rules. Well, there's no section before that that says, how do you get from, I created, I had a violation to I'm getting fined? Where where is the, where it's missing something? So we took this out of the thing. So if you can go back and look, you can basically see this has all of the procedure that your Ethics Commission would need to use so somebody can file a complaint and tells you how the complaint works. And then it says how the investigation would work on the complaint. And then how a hearing, because, you know, we follow the due process rule where you have to have an opportunity to be heard. So that would how the hearing works out and then how a decision is made. So think kind of judicial. That's kind of how you're setting this up. And a decision is made and guess what? Then at the end, you get right to your section you already have that if this decision is against you, how do they enforce it? So you can certainly change any of those words if you feel like you need to change something. That's where you should do it and the state won't care. But those are the 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 big changes. There's only one that isn't labeled in yellow and will never find it. But it is the timing for when the commissions have to fill out their gift form. You go through here and you'll find it's like April third or so. There's, it's an April date. And everything here talks about the preceding calendar year. So most of the time, these forms are due by January thirtieth. You get them in the beginning of January, you know, it's it's flexible. But April is, maybe they were thinking it has to happen with your taxes. I don't know. April's already bad, so why would we do it then? So my thought is that you're going to want to do this by like February fifteenth or something like that. And we'd move the date closer to the beginning of the year so that those forms get filed the same time as your forms get filed. And it's covers the year before. And that's it. So let me tell you about how the process has to work. They can take any questions. We can have a discussion. I know that typically you introduce an ordinance and then you pass the ordinance at another session. And we need you to do that here, but that has to happen with a break. The State Ethics Board passed out these model rules in September and said that you had to be in compliance in October, which is like laughable even by them because they knew they gave you the rules two weeks before their due and it takes all of us two months to do anything, even if we really wanted to do it. And they understood that. The delay was on their side coming up with the model rules. That's the, you know, it took them almost a year to do. So what, as I said earlier, they don't trust you completely to do this. They want you to have their work proofed. So if you introduce the the version that's not for discussion, if you introduce that tonight, then you don't will need to do anything with it because we will send it to the State Ethics Commission. And you would think they would meet real regular so that they could get this approved, but they don't. Okay, the next meeting they're going to meet is in February. So this will sit on your calendar, waiting and waiting and waiting. It'll get reviewed internally by their staff and they'll tell me if any changes need to be made. And it eventually will go before their commission. And then once they vote on it at the state, they'll send us a letter and then we're free to vote on it here. So that would be when I would think if you introduce it tonight, it'll sit until that happens and then you would approve it at that point. And then the state is out of our hair until the next time. However, what we're going to do locally here is after this gets done, we're going to start working with your Ethics Commission to spin them up on what needs to happen because I think you have one, one person who has experience and two people who are new. And so we want them to understand what what they're looking for, what's expected of them. We want to update the forms that you all have to fill out because when you change this requirements, it changed some of the things you have to put in the form. And then we want to update the form that the other commissions have to fill out for the gifts to make it much easier for them to check, know if that's the the thing, which is usually mostly the case. So I think this is going to be an ongoing process, probably to be completed by, you know, March or April, something like that. Any questions?
I have. First of all, thank you very much for this presentation. It does open our eyes to how the state is always watching us. So that's good. My question is more on the ethics. If someone recuses themselves or abstains, do they need to give a reason for the record?
If it is a conflict of interest, so if it's one of the things that is in the ordinance, they must give a reason so that everyone knows that's the potential conflict. So in my example, they're the business owner. They should say, I own the business that you all are about to give this contract to. So I am recusing myself from the discussion and the vote. And it's on the record that way upfront. But if it's because my neighbor is the one that wants to put the deck on and I don't want to vote on this because I got to deal with my neighbor, then you don't need to say that. I mean, it's pretty obvious, but you don't need to say that. You just say, I'm not comfortable in in voting on this and I'm going to either recuse myself from the whole discussion, which if it were my neighbor, that's what I would want to do is I'm just not going to show up for that. But remember, I told you like, if if you didn't show up, they might not have a quorum. So you got to show up and then you can recuse yourself because, you know, that. But you don't need to say the reasons why. And if you abstain, even in your your world where you say, hey, I'm not going to be happy with whatever ordinance you pass and I vote all in favor, yes, all in favor, no, how many abstentions? You don't have to explain your vote. But under Robert's rules, you're allowed the opportunity to do that. So you might want to say for the record, I'm abstaining because I wasn't here last month when you discussed it and I'm not comfortable in doing it. You see that all the time with minutes. If you went at the last meeting, you say, I'm abstaining because I wasn't here to tell you whether that's really true or false.
Thank you. I clarify that. Any questions? Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins. Word for, again, thanks a lot for updating us. I had a question in in the yellow discussion document. It says on line one seventy eight, former official or employee. Did, so how long, it is like someone leaves here and they're quote, a former employee. How often or when do they have to fill out this form?
They don't ever have to fill out the form. That provision says that they can't become employed with the town for a certain period of time. And I I don't recall if it was a year, I think it says in there, there's that you can't, you can't become employed with the town and you can't disclose or use any of that information. That's almost like in perpetuity that you can't disclose that information. So if you learn something because, but I mean, if I learn something because I'm your attorney, I can't really ever disclose if it's confidential and then use it for my own benefit. But there's no forms involved in that.
Okay. And then just a, you mentioned, I'm not sure what line, but it was a, you you, that lobbyists have to file a form with the town that they're a lobbyist.
Right, you go to that section.
So do we have one? Do we have a lobbyist who's filed?
No, not to my knowledge. You don't have that. I'm hoping you have a form. You will have a form.
That's my next question. Do we have a form?
I don't, I don't know. You you probably have a form that you got from the state website. I mean, that's probably what you used. We want to make this very straightforward. The question that's always going to come up is you have people who are professionals that come in here and advocate for things all the time, right? You have the lawyers that come in and say,
Right.
I'm in favor of this annexation or I want that. Are they considered lobbyists and under the definition?
That's my question.
They probably would not be. Okay, they would have to be engaged in the sole business of lobbying, like a lobbying firm, like a that type of thing.
Okay.
But no, and you're not unusual that most towns have lobbying provisions and nobody really ever enforces them. So what we need to do is we not, we really need to get it comfortable at a staff level because your Ethics Commission is the is the commission that hears things. They're not going to be the enforcement people.
So so theoretically, we would know if a lobbyist has has filed the form.
And a staff person would say, like, for example, let's say I wanted to come in and let me think of one that, I wanted to come in and I wanted to sell you guys on building a solar farm and passing legislation that would allow a solar farm for the benefit of my client, the solar company. The staff, when they get this spooled up because they're not just going to come in and stand here, would say, hey, by the way, you might have to fill out this form and here it is so that you kind of do it. It's very straightforward because it just has the information. It might have the consideration they're paid, if they're paid money to come and lobby with you. But that's where we need to focus on, making sure that people know they have that disclosure. And then to your point, you would know that before they got here. That, okay, you kind of can tell that, right? If they stand up and say, I represent so and so, they're probably a professional. But now, let's, I don't want to belabor this, but let's split hairs. If a planner gets up and is advocating for his client about a plan, he's not a lobbyist. I mean, he's he's advocating about a professional piece of the plan. Same thing with the lawyer. The lawyer's trying to advocate for their client, but they're probably the lawyer for the client. They're not a lobbyist for them.
And then, thank you. And then I just, so so let's say one of us or think we may have a conflict. So so is there a written procedure or how we go about getting that determination? Because you mentioned two courses, two possible courses, talking to you as our town attorney or the Ethics Commission. So I'm not sure what's the right.
So one is more informal. And so you would save that for probably ninety percent of what you deal with. Like this is coming on the agenda. I'm concerned because I'm in Lions Club with the person. That would be a phone call to the town manager. He would call me and you would get like a, an email. Let's just say it's an, it's just a simple email. Town attorney looked at this and says, under this, it's not even close. So, okay. But on close calls, it's kind of like football. On close calls, we're going to go to the booth. Okay? And so if you go into the booth at that point in time, that's where you're going to have to impanel the Ethics Commission to hear the issue and then give you a written opinion. So that would be difficult to do for something that's going to happen next week or the week after. A lot of times that happens when you're like saying, I'm going to get another job and I'm going to have an employment that's going to possibly create a conflict with my job as a town councilman. Let's say you got a job with State Highway Administration in the district where you're at here. Does that create a conflict or not? Well, that's beyond the close call that the town manager and I can come up with. So what we would do would we'd say, we're going to take that situation to our Ethics Commission. They're going to have a discussion about it. It may not be a hearing or anything. And then they will give you an opinion. And that opinion says, we believe under the terms that you have that it does not create a conflict and therefore you're free to have the employment. So you can see it's a much more substantial thing that takes a lot more effort to give. But for you, before you quit your other job, you'd want to know that. So you can see it's really kind of important and that's how you hold the Ethics Commission to say, yes, you've been absolved by that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you for this presentation. Sorry, I was late. Child pass off thing. I had a question as far as the Ethics Commission. I know we've got three folks on it and I know this explains it kind of as to the legal language, right?
Right.
I did not see in here as to what happens after the decision if someone wants to appeal it or they're wants, they want to fight that decision anyway. Is that covered under Comar and some other way, fashion or form?
It would just be the normal standard that you have. You can appeal it to Circuit Court if you dislike it. And I think it would not be the finding that would be. It would be the enforcement mechanism. So if you got fined, the 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 problems usually are the town is going to be the moving party to enjoin somebody. So if the Ethics Commission finds out that Councilman Jenkins can't have this job, but he went and got the job, the Ethics Commission would then say, all right, we're going to court to enjoin him from not taking the job, but being on the council anymore type of thing. So that's how it would done. If if there is an enforcement action against a person where they say, well, we're going to fine you. I mean, the fines are like four dollars a day, maybe some some minor thing, then that person could appeal. That shouldn't have happened type of thing. Your bigger issue is, of course, if they never fined you anything, but the Ethics Commission found that you violated the ethics ordinance, that's a pretty big black eye for a public official. And so you 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 would then either have to create an appeals process or it would just be the to Circuit Court.
Which we may or may not want to outline in the document, right? How to how to fight the Ethics Commission ruling. Then secondly about that, so we've got three folks on our Ethics Commission, Mr. Manuel. Are they, they just meet on an as needed basis or do they have a regular meeting? Do they have any kind of training beyond those that have experience?
So they they meet as needed at this. I mean, I don't know what you have done. What you should be doing is they they meet as needed. And then every year, so if the timing is that your forms are due in January thirty first, they would meet sometime after that, not months, but maybe not days either. And they would review the forms for completeness. And that's really what it is. It's completing to make sure you filled out every box. They're not going to do a search to say, well, we checked Mr. Trolinger and he does own a vacation property he didn't list. But you'd find that the completeness is, the the errors in the form. You know, a lot of times people like, they don't list their house. It's like, well, we know they live in town, so go fix Schedule A because it's not on there. So they would meet then. And then in an election year, they would need to meet, and it becomes a little dance, at sometime after the filing deadline to run shortly thereafter because people can't be a candidate unless their forms get reviewed. So if let's say the filing deadline was on a Friday, that following week, the Ethics Commission would need to meet to review the forms, to make sure they're accurate so that then these people become candidates. Those are the two mandatory times. As far as training, the state offers training. I mean, mostly it's online now, so they could take training. But there isn't a requirement like there is for the planning commission and board of appeals.
I and I ask because obviously the implications are significant, right? And and I think I kind of understand the way that is, and it's written based on my experience and my training as to how it's supposed to go down. But you even have a distinction between what is made public and verse verse what is is kind of, you know, can be discretionary as far as what's disclosed. And and that's a big difference. I would assume they would, I mean, wisdom would indicate that they would lean on your advice or some council's advice on that. But, you know, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if that's something you get involved in at some point. If 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 there is a trigger where there's a review or or you're on speed dial, whatever, with the Ethics Commission, how how that might work.
In in other towns, the way it's worked, and it it happens rarely in our small towns. I mean, and maybe in the bigger towns where there are people on staff. But in our small towns, typically you receive, the typical one is you receive the anonymous complaint. And then the Ethics Commission, you know, every every stone is unturned, it was turned over. So the Ethics Commission gets that and they say, we have this anonymous complaint. Most places say, we're not going to, we're not going to take up anonymous complaints. But as you see in the the ordinance, they can on their own motion investigate things. So if they see this, they're going to say, well, does this rise to the level of a violation? And most of the time, it does not. I mean, they can go by the ordinance and say, for example, the one I always get habitual in this one town, one of the council members is a real estate agent. They say that's a conflict of. one of the council members is a real estate agent. They say that's a conflict of interest. Well, that's not a conflict of interest. He might be selling real estate in the town. He's not on the planning commission. He doesn't. So they go through and they say, on its face, even if it's true, the summary judgment type of rule, it's not a conflict. We're not going to investigate this further. But then they can on their own motion say, well, yes, this does need to be investigated. And it's interesting that if you see the procedure, the investigation becomes before the hearing. So the hearing is almost not a fact-finding hearing. It's a, here's our results type of thing. You would like to refugiate them type of deal. And I've only had a very few that get that far. They're always about, it's, it's sad to say this, but it's, it's always about the little things and they're usually politically motivated.
Right. I mean, I could see this being used as a weapon.
That's what, you know, you're really trying to make sure that it's not weaponized, but that's, you know, you have a person who signs their name, councilman on their personal newsletter. And people say, oh, he's trying to get more business. That's a used prestige of office and we're taking it to the Ethics Commission. In that situation, the Ethics Commission looks into it and it's their judgment. They say, well, you know, councilman, you know, in the, it's not Eloise, but the rules of a proper etiquette says you can use those titles and stuff, just like mayor or major or whatever. So they argue it over and then they, they make an opinion.
And last question to that end, is there any guidance here or otherwise that kind of informs the commission as to the degree of scope that they should be investigating? And I, I know that may come from training that they may or may not be doing. But other than that voluntary training.
Other than the voluntary training, it, it's typical that, it, it's unfortunate, but for this board, they kind of keep them over here until there's a complaint. They don't, because they don't, they don't know. And they don't feel empowered because they're, you want me to do this? What do I have to do type of thing?
Right.
So the training element would be important. MML offers an ethics training component. And so you could certainly get them trained about what ethics boards do. The state has a training component with the State Ethics Commission. I don't know that they actually have conferences or stuff like that, but it is almost to that level where is if you had somebody. But a lot of times it's not the individual members that need to know this. It's the staff who need to be the ones that say, wow, I, I see this coming and I should be getting it to the plan or to the Ethics Commission. Just like if you had a, somebody who wanted to put a deck on and the staff has to say, well, should I go to the board of zoning appeals or the planning commission? You know, they, they got to be the gatekeeper. So maybe education on the staff too might be the thing.
Okay. Perhaps that can be area of discussion. Thank you very much.
Great. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Town Attorney, I know we'd mentioned the area where April 30th is specifically listed within the code or the ordinances. Kelly, section 20-7, Financial Disclosures, Paragraph C. And I think if we can determine, we want to adjust that date forward, we can make that change. And then maybe introduce it next week at our council meeting. And then send it off to the, the Ethics Commission for their blessing.
I would suggest February 15th. It's in the middle of the month. You're not likely to have these forms sent out on January 1st or 2nd. So by the, if you say they're done, they're sent out in the first week of January. People have 30 days to respond. February 15th sounds pretty good.
Sounds good to me.
Buddy, good with it?
Any objections today?
No.
All right. So we will have this changed and we will bring it back up next week for introduction. And wait for the state to bless us.
We will send it off and just let you know.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. We have a reason to go into closed session this evening. Do I have someone who would like to make a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Mayor, I've motioned to go into closed session immediately following this meeting on the statutory authority for closed session 3-305B14 to discuss before a contractor awarded his own and a matter directly relating to negotiating strategy. Cable franchise agreement.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Any discussion? I will do roll call. If you are in favor of going into closed session, please indicate by saying aye. If not, nay. Councilman Goldsmith?
Aye.
Councilman Traulinger?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
And Mayor James is an aye as well. I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Leaving adjourn. Thank you so much. I appreciate.